You're all set.
Uh, welcome everyone to the Town of Colony Planning Board. Uh, for the record, it's Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021 at 6 o'clock PM. The meeting is now called to order. Uh, roll call, Steve Hyder.
Here.
Susan.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Lou.
Here.
Chip.
Here.
Craig. Craig, Craig's here. I'll say for the record.
Here, sorry.
Okay. Pete Studo here. I think that's all seven of us. Um, next item on the agenda is report of the Planning and Economic Development Director, Sean McGuire. Sean?
Well, good, good evening once again. Uh, just our usual uh, update on COVID protocols. We still continue to work on two different split teams here, one remote uh, in the office, uh, one working remotely, the other team in the office back and forth. And so we're going to continue again with these remote meetings until uh, the pandemic situation further improves. Other than that, we're working on our annual report to have that for you next month to let you know how 2020 wrapped up for us. Uh, that's all I've got for you tonight.
Do you want to talk about the meet, the format of the meeting and how people can access just for the, if somebody's listening and they don't understand it?
Sure. So the format of the meeting is that uh, this meeting actually runs in two different formats. Uh, we invite the public applicants, board members, anybody who's going to interactively work uh, on this meeting or contribute during this meeting to join us via Zoom. And then we list that in our public notice. Anybody who just wants to observe the meeting as if they were sitting in the audience at town hall has the opportunity to do so via YouTube. Uh, so we'll do that. We just ask that the board members remain uh, on camera. If there's noise, you may want to mute your microphones. Uh, the same thing, we'll ask the applicants to unmute. And when we call upon them, we'll ask the public to do the same. If there's anybody here from the public tonight who has a comment um, during any public comment period for any of the cases this evening, um, that is uh, that you know, the, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next item is the Order of Regular Business, which uh, starts with uh, letter A, 447 Albany Shaker Road, Shaker Woods Mixed Use. Um, Sketch Plan Review for Construction of a One Story, 6,000 Square Foot Commercial Building and a Two Story, 5,487 Square Foot Eight Unit Apartment Building with 1,536 Square Foot Garage. The site is Zoned Encore Neighborhood Commercial Office Residential. And we'll start with the uh, Department uh, for an introduction into this project.
Hi Peter, thank you. Uh, so tonight you're going to be asked to offer general feedback in regards to the sketch plan review here. As you mentioned, this is 447 Albany Shaker Road. It is located within an Encore Zone adjacent to a single family residential zone. Uh, so as a result, the proper landscape buffer will be a priority, uh, as well as attention to uh, the location of refuse and dumpsters and hours of operation for the front commercial building. Um, Mike, do you have any further comments? And Mike Tangler is the planner who's reviewing this project.
Yeah, that was a great intro. Uh, the only thing I'd remind the board is that they've uh, seen this project before in a similar incarnation. Um, really the main difference is that the rear building uh, which was approved previously as a commercial building um, is supposed to be a uh, unit apartments.
Okay, has that approval expired?
I believe it has.
Yeah, okay. So that, okay, we'll turn it over to the applicant. I see Vic Cappanera there, perhaps with his clients. Is that, is this your problem?
Can everybody hear me?
It's a little fuzzy, but we can hear you.
Well, um, everyone knows who I am, Vic Cappanera. I'm here with Frank Fazio and Pat Farrakane in my office. And uh, as was indicated by Mr. McGuire, uh, this project was previously approved back in 2013 for two commercial office buildings. And uh, at that time, uh, we received all the necessary approvals. Uh, my client was unable to fill these buildings. And then several years later, we came back with a proposal for a daycare center. Uh, that did not work through the numbers for my client. And so here we are today with another um, proposal, sketch plan for what would be the same building that was previously approved in the front, which is the 6,000 square foot retail office building. But the new change is this two-story apartment uh, building in the back with a proposed garage. Uh, basically, what was previously approved in terms of square footage was 12,000 uh, 200, 320 square feet. Uh, the proposal here is 13,023. The green space increases from what was approved at 39% to 55.8%. And uh, the pavement area went from 43.88% to 26.9, about 20, 27%. Uh, that's essentially what's going on. We moved the project further away from the residential zone. We, we meet all of the setbacks as required. Actually, uh, the building in the front is 143 feet setback when the requirement is 100. The back building is 100 foot setback. And we meet the setbacks um, for all other aspects of this property in terms of front side and rear yard setbacks. That's essentially what we have. I don't know if Sean has the elevation of the proposed rear um, apartments. Can you put that up? That's what the uh, proposal would look like in the rear. And uh, Sean, if you could put up the front building, this essentially is the exact same building that was previously approved for the 6,000 square foot building in the front. And uh, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. Um, again, I said, we've got Frank Fazio here. He's the engineer on the project. He can answer any of the uh, engineering questions. So that's pretty much it, uh, members of the board.
Okay, this is being reviewed by our town designated engineer, CHA, and I see that Joe Grasso is here. Joe, I know you haven't completed a formal um, review, but could you give us your preliminary thoughts? And could you also address close to upfront uh, the conversion rate to apartments? Cause it looks like eight is a lot of apartments at that 3,000 square foot conversion. So.
Yeah, so, so, so we have reviewed the allowable density calculation and what they're proposing is in conformance with the, the density conversion. Um, I see, so, we've got it in front of me. They are allowed um, 8.3 residential units and they're proposing eight. And uh, they're allowed uh, 6,200 square feet of commercial and they're proposing 6,000. So basically they're um, they're maximizing the development as allowed in the density regulations.
If it were done all commercial, how many square foot would they have been allowed? That's gotta be part of that calculation, right?
Uh, 25,000 square feet.
Okay. And then you take 80% of that, right?
Uh, oh no, sorry. The, the maximal allowable is um, is 31,140 square feet.
Okay, that makes sense now. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Um, so we, we were not involved in the review of this project when it was proposed, uh, you know, many years ago. Um, so, so we're uh, coming into it um, without the, the history of the site plan, which we assume had gone through a thorough review by the, by the planning board. Um, so you know, we're not going to comment too much on, on the layout. Uh, we, the arrangement of the buildings and the parking areas seems to be very uh, efficient and orderly. Um, it's got one curb cut on Albany Shaker Road, which, which we support that access arrangement. Um, if, if, if we were looking at a blank sheet of paper and if the project hadn't gone through a planning board review in the past, we, we would probably have suggested that the, that the buildings possibly be flipped on the site so that the backs of the buildings were up against the residential zone. I think that's um, you know, just because behind the buildings, it's generally less, less activity than the amount of activity that takes place within the parking area. But we assume that that type of issue was already addressed um, during the previous review. We do understand that there was a lot of.
Joe, can we see the site plan again?
Yeah, we, we um, assume that there was a lot of public review uh, based on the site's proximity to the uh, adjoining single family residential uh, zoning district, which does have with it setbacks for the buildings, uh, which is what I think pushes these buildings to the uh, west side of the site and, and then frees up the, the east side of the site for, for parking areas. I think there's 100 foot setback between the SFR zone and the buildings which they meet. And then there's a 50 foot setback from the parking areas, which is also met. So you know, those setback requirements um, kinda uh, dictate the layout of the buildings and the, and the parking areas. Um, it's uh, you know, access is off of Albany Shaker Road, a county road. Uh, so obviously uh, the, the county will need to review the application from a access standpoint and a curb cut permit. It's our understanding that Jim Merkel from the county has already given uh, conceptual approval of the proposed access arrangement. Um, you know, getting back to the layout as it relates to the adjoining residences, there's a, there's a 50 foot uh, buffer area there. They are proposing some stormwater infiltration units there. That is a ripe area that should be considered for appreciable landscaping in Birmingham. So we're, we're not sure how compatible those underground infiltration areas will be with uh, any Birmingham that the planning board deemed or uh, any screening or buffering that the planning board deems may be appropriate. But that's something for the, the board to weigh in on uh, early in its review so that when Frank starts to um, you know, go through the calculations for the need for more stormwater management, he can factor those, those comments in. Um, we had commented during DCC to provide uh, some architectural design uh, studies so we could start to get a look at what the buildings are going to look like. Uh, based on the renderings that have been provided, we are uh, very supportive of the style of architecture. Given the footprints that they're proposing, we think that the, the roof lines and articulation of the, of the elevations helps to reduce the scale of the building and make them more, look um, less commercial and a little bit more residential in scale. Um, so, so we applaud the applicant for their work on the architectural design of, of both buildings. Um, in terms of the parking, they've met the parking per code. We appreciate the, the underground or the um, uh, garages that are included in the apartments building, which we think is a, is a, a very desirable feature of the plan. We also think that the proposed garage is also a very desirable feature of the plan to reduce the amount of uh, surface parking. Um, but the, the commercial building, you know, I, it's my understanding that the tenant is unknown. And, and when you're dealing with these small uh, commercial office buildings, um, which could be a retail use, that the uh, what we've learned is that the parking demand is, can really be dictated by the specific tenant. So if a, a, a specific tenant is known throughout the design process, I think we want to uh, use that information to help validate the amount of parking proposed on, on the site. Um, see, uh, we, one component of the Albany Shaker Road corridor, this, this quarter was looked at for um, you know, roadway and pedestrian improvements. Our, it's our understanding this section of Albany Shaker Road has been identified as needing a sidewalk. So we would like that sidewalk uh, shown on the plan. You, you may be able to see from the plan that the, that the edge of the right of way is actually in rather close proximity of Albany Shaker Road. Um, uh, so, so some careful consideration needs to be given to where that sidewalk is located, whether or not it would encroach on uh, private property or across the frontage of the site and therefore could trigger the need for either an easement uh, to Omni County or um, you know, a conveyance of a strip of land and fee to accommodate that uh, that sidewalk within the, within the right of way. So that's something that we would like, would like to uh, you know, address early. Some options for the sidewalk could be right up along the uh, an elevated curb section of Albany Shaker Road or separated by uh, 10 feet, uh, so that you've got adequate separation um, and a, and a maintenance strip there, uh, if there's no curb along Albany Shaker Road constructed. Um, the other thing is, is the design standards, uh, you know, want to uh, establish that front building facade line. So we would recommend that um, you know, a combination of fencing and, and maybe some uh, stone columns are articulated across the frontage uh, in line with the front facade of the building, not actually extending across uh, the front of the building, but maybe tying into the, the corners um, to establish that, that street line and uh, provide some more, you know, uh, screen views when looking into the site from the, from the public right of way. Um, let's see. That's it. All of our other comments are um, you know, rather engineering related and uh, we, we brought those up to uh, Frank's team as part of the DCC review. And uh, we don't expect that our comments, uh, other than those I've already mentioned regarding the stormwater management area would trigger um, you know, substantial changes to the site plan.
Okay, we'll hear from questions and comments from the board members. Uh, Paul, do you have any questions or comments?
I've got a couple of questions. Um, what's your plan for lighting this? Uh, since you have two components here, you got commercial and residential. Um, you plan on lighting on the buildings. Uh, how are you going to do the parking lot lighting?
I think the, the apartment building itself will probably let itself more towards uh, just building lighting. In the, the main parking lot for the commercial, we may look at some low poles or something, uh, certainly with LED lights. So we can limit uh, reduce the number of poles that you have up there. So we're kind of, instead of the neighbors being there, so I, you know, obviously with the lighting, down lighting and, and away from homes. So um, we're gonna try to minimize as much as possible. We certainly don't want a lot of lights popping here. And then we're hoping with the apartment building, when we get into that, we can do more with building mounted uh, and some, some minor lighting out in that location there. But we don't envision any really tall poles or anything like that.
Yeah, the other question I have is uh, uh, number seven on our uh, list, the uh, level two electric charging stations. Uh, the reason why we're going to be doing this going forward on every building, every, every plan. Um, obviously, if you paid attention to the news, the good news, uh, General Motors is going to be within the next uh, probably decade. It's going to be, everything they sell is going to be electric, their whole fleet. So this is a time to think about, it may even help you get tenants in the building if you uh, consider at least putting the conduit in place uh, for charging stations. Uh, you know, I, I would say it's coming, whether you want it to or not. So I really strongly consider number seven. That's it, Peter.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Susan, comments or questions?
Yeah, I think that's something we can look at, especially with the apartments. If you know, some of the cars and the living there, uh, we'd have one there and then maybe possibly one over by the commercial. It's certainly something, we hadn't really thought about it that much, but it is something we can look into though.
Thank you. Susan, I think you're muted.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions, but I really do like the architectural design. I think really, really beautiful buildings.
Okay, nice. Craig?
I, I agree with, with Susan. Architecturally, the buildings are, are great. Um, as you move forward, um, want to see it elevation of the garage as well. Um, on parking, because you don't know, and I think Joe, I mean, kind of touched on this a little bit. I mean, no reason why we can't look at some bank parking here, I don't think. It just, it, at least out of the gate. Is there?
Totally.
I don't know. I mean, you, you'd have to comment on that. Bank parking?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, I think when Joe was talking, uh, if we get more towards where we, uh, I mean, obviously with the ideal situation, know some of the tenants before we put the building up.
Right.
In which case, if we find out that they don't, and we do find a lot of times that whatever goes in some of these buildings don't require the amount of parking, you know, um, and we, and we certainly would, would love to do like a bank parking and that would even reduce some of that.
Okay.
You know, we are looking at using forest pavements and that would, you know, help with this with a runoff, but uh, the bank spaces, I think is something I've done a lot before. And uh, it's usually, usually ends up staying that way. Um, so hopefully the tenants that go in there don't have quite the demand of what the uh, the, the town requirements are there, uh, based on retail and office. So.
Okay. So Frank, Frank, you must have worked with uh, Mr. Hirschberg before then, right?
No, I have not, no.
Well, he's the king of porous pavement. I.
Oh, no.
You're the first engineer I've ever heard of, other than him talking about. It's very good.
I like doing it.
Very good. Sorry.
And then, and then this is, this is probably more toward, more toward Sean and Joe Grasso. I mean, this side of, unless I'm mistaken, this side of Albany Shaker does not have sidewalks anywhere on that whole side. I think all the way from Osborne, uh, gee, I, I may, maybe all the way to Everett. Maybe there's a little stretch at, at Everett where um, Christopher Lee's buildings are. It, is there a, it seems, it seems silly to put sidewalk in front of this building. If we can take that money, have the developer, you know, put that money, either build them somewhere else. I don't know. It just seems silly to just put this little stretch of sidewalk in where it's probably going to be forever before it's connected.
We'll take a close look at the sidewalk plan.
Yeah, that's it. On the other side of the street. Yeah, they are. That's it.
But, but I would think that we may want to at least look at um, sidewalks extending up to Osborne, right from this site.
Hmm, except there's, you know, there's new, you got the, the drugstore and then the plaza with the fitness center and Dunkin' Donuts. I mean, they're brand new, basically brand new developments that don't have sidewalks and very well may never have, you know, may not have sidewalks for 20 or 30 years at this point. Whatever. I mean, we can look, you, you guys can look at it. I'm just bringing up the issue. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's consistent. What we, we take a look at is any, any new development on the first commercial corridor down, we look at a proposal for sidewalks. And if there's not a lot of connectivity there, you know, our suggestion is, is to um, either take a value for the sidewalk improvement so that we have connectivity through the corridor. We can finally make that connection or to consider an off-site improvement to offset the uh, offset the fact that it doesn't make a lot of sense to develop a sidewalk here, but it's still our overall goal to have that connectivity around town.
Okay, thank you. Chief Hyder?
Yeah, uh, a couple of things. The proposed garage, it's set back further west than building number two. And I, and I don't know if there's a practical reason why that is, why that can't be a, a straight 15.67 feet to the building, the property line going up. I don't know why it's set farther back. Um, so if they can answer that, I mean, obviously in the final stage, I would hope there'd be some landscaping behind those buildings um, going up. The other thing is the, I noticed that you, you account for four parking spots under the building, within the building. And I think that's a grand idea. It's a wonderful idea. But I know another apartment owners in, in the capital district have sometimes complained that the people don't use the garages for parking, but they use it for storage. So you know, I don't want to disagree with Craig, but I'm, I'm worried that there's not enough parking on the site, on the site, or that it may not be a good site for banking because you technically don't have enough outside parking for the apartment building, uh, independent of itself. Um, so really basically that's the only thing. I agree about the sidewalk in front. It'd be the sidewalk to nowhere if you were doing this building. Um, it's those basic things. Why that garage has to sit back a little farther than the other building, landscaping and the parking?
Can you do that? No.
Okay, uh, I don't know if the developer has a response or we can just uh, take that into consideration.
Do you want to comment on?
Yeah, as far as the, the alignment along the backs, um, the, the commercial building, I've actually moved that back further away from the, from the residence a little bit more. So the previous approval had it 100 feet away and we're 140 feet. I do need some space back there because we're running the water lines back there. So we need enough room for that. Uh, as far as the garage, um, if I try to move that to the south, it puts a pinch between the garage and the, and the apartment building. Uh, you can see there's really not a lot of space. There's only like.
He's saying move it east.
He's saying move it east. Building in a, in a corner, sidewalk there. So.
He's suggesting to move it east. He's suggesting you move it east. So that the back of the garage aligns up with the commercial building. I think that's what he said.
Right.
Distance setback.
Now it's 11 feet, the uh, commercial's 15 point something and he's suggesting that they be even.
An extra four and a half feet. Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Can you hear me?
I don't know if, I don't know if you heard Frank, but he was just saying that if he slipped that building down to meet the exact 15.67 feet that the current proposed building is, it would get too close to the um, rear apartment building. Is that correct, Frank?
Yeah, if we move, if we push the garage to the south, towards you, towards the, into the parking lot more.
Parking lot.
Into the parking lot, we get more of a pinch between the corner of the garage and the apartment building.
Okay, that's.
In the corner is basically just, that's just a porch area. Uh, we want to be able to have some sort of continuity for people to be able to walk through there. Um, you know, because that is a garage, is uh, sheds inside that have doors in them. And people need to be bring, will be bringing things in and out of the building there. So we want to keep that a little bit open. I can try bringing it in a little bit more, but it's uh.
So you'll, he'll take a look at it.
Yeah.
Okay, my misunderstanding is that, to me, that's east because it's going towards Albany, but I see where the north, I see where the compass is. So that looks like it's south on that. Yeah. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Okay, Lou, do you have comments or questions?
Yes, uh, I like the architect, but uh, do we have on the, on the Shaker roadside, is, is that an entrance in there? On that end of the building?
You mean the building, Lou?
Yeah, the, the building itself.
What we'll do is we're gonna make, it, it'll be designed such that it'll look like there's an entrance there.
Okay, do we need a waiver for that then?
John? I, I don't think so. If we show an entrance, a doorway.
Okay, you're gonna put a doorway in there then?
Well.
Or, or make it look like.
I don't want to speak for the engineer. I mean, Frank, uh, you know that under the design standards, the way this works is that the front of the building that faces Albany Shaker Road has got to be designed as if there's a, a door, a, a front entrance.
Yeah, it has to look like so. And I guess the question would be, does it have to have an entrance? We can certainly make it look like it has. We can dress it up a little bit better.
Yeah.
Uh, so it looks like the front of a building. Um, but all the entrances to the buildings, to all the stores are, are, are from the parking lot.
Yeah.
So we're not really proposing an entrance from there, but we're going to create the facade to make it look like that.
Right.
I, I think we're more worried about the visual. I think, I don't want to speak for Lou, but he's worried about the visual from Albany Shaker. But you may need technically, you may need a waiver technically, if that's the case.
Well, we'll take care of that. We'll address that, Lou.
Okay, now with the dumpsters, I see you got them on the residential side. Is there a way of moving them away from the residential side?
What's that, dumpsters? They want to, he wants to know if the dumpsters can be moved away from the residential.
Yeah, I, I can try to look. I originally had them over by the garage, but uh, the new, when maneuvering of picking the dumpsters up, uh, wasn't working very well. There wasn't a lot of room. Um, I can try and see if I can do something over there, but they want them away from it.
Yeah, we, we can.
Well, we'll certainly, we'll certainly put in, we'll certainly put in screening like a wall. So you, you wouldn't see them. Um, and you know, and the pickup hours obviously are posted so that they're not there in the middle of the night or anything like that.
Well, that's the, the major concern I have with it is, is the noise and the neighbors are going to respond to that.
Yeah.
We were. Yeah, we're, we uh, when we got this approved back in, when was it? 13, I think. Uh, I met along with uh, Mike Tangler with the neighbors and uh, we agreed to put a fence up. In fact, the fence was going to be two feet inside of our, of the property line because some of the neighbors requested that. And um, so the fence, you, you won't see it. Well, you know, and then again, there's not going to be nearly as much parking as there was previously approved. But uh, Frank can look at it, see if he can't potentially locate it some other place on the property.
Okay, now uh, who, you don't have any amenities for the apartment. Did you plan on putting any in?
Yeah, yeah, there'll be like bicycle racks, uh, you want to put in like, like a uh, pay up for picnic tables, things like that to make it look more residential. So, so people can use the yard. So there'll be, there'll be some amenities. I just didn't show them yet. We gotta get into that.
Okay, yeah, we want to make sure that that's on the plan.
Yep.
That's it, Peter.
Okay, Chip, do you have comments or questions?
Yeah. What's the square footage of the apartments?
The apartments? For what?
Individually, but for the eight apartments.
Oh, do you have the square footage for the apartments?
For the units themselves?
For the units themselves, Chip?
Yes.
How much do you think the apartments would be each square footage wise?
Approximately 1,300 square.
Approximately 1,300 square feet, Chip.
Okay, what's, what's the uh, proposed rental on these apartments?
Rental, what's the rental? Do you know what the rental might be, Pat?
I'm not sure about the market here, but.
There'll be market rate.
Okay. Okay, you know, the math doesn't work on the apartments. The whole building's fifty four hundred and eighty seven square feet divided by eight is six seventy five.
I think that's the footprint, Pete.
That's the footprint.
Okay, okay, got it.
So it's. It's about probably about eleven hundred square feet per unit then, I think. Because with, but that's all right. You don't have any hallways, do you?
There each, I believe access is, is each individual unit has its own access. There's not a central hallway down the building now.
Right. Okay. So what 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 would market be? I mean, roughly.
Hard to say, Chip. I I see rates going anywhere from. Fifteen hundred dollars a month to over two thousand dollars a month locally.
Okay. All right. I I was, I was just curious because it's, I mean, it's a very good looking bu- building. It's, you know, good materials, good colors. It's great.
So so Chip, we're looking at the floor plans right now.
Yeah.
The four units on the main floor each have eleven hundred and twenty six square feet of living space. And the upstairs unit are longer, are larger and give you thirteen hundred and eighty nine square feet of living space, so. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm done, Peter.
Okay, Mike, you've answered most of the questions for me. If there's, is there a potential restaurant use here? Because I I I guess I'm asking what the code provides. For restaurants in so many feet from a residential district. Does anybody know the answer to that?
I do, and there is no restaurant proposed.
Okay, what, what, do you know what the code provides offhand?
I believe, I believe in the code and and the honorable Paul Rosano, who's worked tirelessly on modifying the zoning code over the last few years. He might know better than me, but I think it's, I think it's now, it's either one hundred or two hundred feet. But Paul, do you know offhand, two hundred? Yeah.
Okay. From the district or from the, from the building?
From the dis- from the district, I believe. Or no, 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 I'm sorry. It's from the building to the district line.
Correct.
Okay, okay. Okay, they've already mentioned that the building's supposed to be facing the the road, and I just got a text from Zach. Or from Sean, rather, that buildings must present their main facade and entrance toward the street. Buildings should be oriented parallel or perpendicular to public sidewalks. And allow for parking in the rear side of the proposed structure. We'll look into whether we need a waiver for that. You know, that's sort of a technical thing to analyze. But we would look at to look, look at to like a frontage. We would like it to look like frontage from Albany Shaker Road.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, landscaping is gonna be important. I I'm not sure, you referred to a fence. I'm not sure where that was. Or whether it's the two sides that face residential, but I think once we hear from the neighbors, and I think it's gonna be more apparent. That landscaping and screening are gonna be critical. Okay, other than that, I think the architecture looks pretty good myself, too. So, that's, anybody, any other comments from board members or the town designated engineer? Okay, thank you. I hope you can take away our comments and incorporate them into your next, next set of applications.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for listening to us.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, nine four seven Troy's Connected Road, DePaula Mazda. Request for a one year extension to concept to expire on February thirteenth, twenty twenty one. For construction of an automobile sales and service and parts facility. The site is own C O R Commercial Office Residential, and I'll turn it over to the department for any introductory comments they may have.
Hi, everybody. No, I don't, I think it's pretty self explanatory. The board may recall Mr. DePaula died a couple of years ago. And then with COVID, they have had some more delays, so there's, they did provide a letter.
Okay, thank you, Monique. Monique's with the department. We'll turn it over to the applicant if they have any comments they'd like to make. Are they here? Okay, CHA is also the T D E. I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
No, I have no comments on that.
Okay, does the board have any comments or questions? Okay, do we have a motion for a one year extension on that? Chief made the motion, who, Lou seconded it? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, nineteen Fuller Road Stewart Shop, request approval to use six bank parking spaces. To meet parking demand. The site is own C O R Commercial Office Residential. And we'll turn that over to the department for introductory comment.
Pete, I'll, I'll take this one.
Thank you, Jack.
Yep, this project was approved back in November of two thousand and eighteen from the planning board and on the.
Oh, can we see a site plan, by the way?
I think Sean will pull it right up for us. And on the, the final approval, there was a, there was a statement that if we're going to unbank these parking spots, they needed to come back to the planning board. Chris Potter supplied me an email saying during the peak time. They are parking on the, you know, the driveways and the accessways to where. He wants to add these six spaces, so this is really what the request is for. The building's already had its certificate of occupancy, everything, the site's fully developed. They're just looking to do this, the six banks box, six bank spots. In addition to that, he's also looking to move the air compressor from the corner of the building. I, it's the front right, the left side of the entrance. And he's gonna move it down to the corner of Fuller Road and Catherine. And as a request from a neighbor that we had. They requested to add a stop bar and a stop sign at the. Corner of Catherine, yes, Sean's circling for us right now. The previous approval didn't have a stop sign or stop bar, so. There were times to where people were rolling out onto Catherine without stopping, so we're gonna try to prevent it there. Chris, I I did see you on here. If you have any other remarks, you can go ahead and.
Before we do that, did you also request a hard curb there?
I know Paul Rosano has been requesting a curb for that.
Okay, so we'll let Paul talk about it when he. So we're turning it over to the applicant now?
Yeah, that's all I got.
Is the applicant here?
He is. There he is.
Chris Potter.
Chris Potter from Stewart's. I really don't have anything else to add from what Zach had mentioned. You know, we're just, during peak times, we don't have enough parking, so I think.
Paul Rosano, because he apparently has looked at this site closely. Paul?
Uh, yeah, Chris, I don't know if you remember, but I had requested you to consider some kind of hard curbing there. Just to make it almost impossible for somebody to take a right turn. Now, I will say. I've been up and down the street talking to the neighbors for the last couple of years. And I don't think there's really a problem with people coming out of Stewart's and going right, except for the people that live there. But I'd like you to strongly consider that because we've done it in other places. And it's just a deterrent. If it's possible to do it, I would really appreciate it. Same kind of curbing you see over where the Lowe's is over in Latham. Where you, you, you're forced to turn left. You can't even turn right because you gotta drive over a curb. So I would like you to consider something there. If it's not a curb, maybe. Maybe some low plantings or something just to deter people from even thinking about it.
Okay, Chris, do you wanna react to that now?
Yeah, we we can certainly look at doing something. I I think probably the curb maybe. Maybe the best option to prevent it. You know, it's something that we could easily install when we were to do the, the parking, so.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Since you're gonna be over there grading and paving, it might be a good time to drive us some footings in and then pour some concrete and be done with it.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll continue to talk about that. Chip, do you have any comments or questions?
I don't.
Lou?
I'm good.
Chief?
The only thing is to Paul's point about the curbing, I agree. To his point about more landscaping in a corner, I wouldn't because. You know, you're making everybody turn left there. You don't wanna cover their view of cars coming right, so.
Okay, okay. Craig? Susan?
The only thing I have about the relocating the air, can it be closer to Fuller Road and so it's farther away from. You know, residential?
I think, I think it is the new location. Can you circle the new location again?
Susan, they moved it to the corner, the farthest away from the residential. We wouldn't, we didn't wanna have them put it in the bank spots.
So where is it now? Maybe that's where I'm getting.
Where Sean has the X is where it originally is.
Oh, okay, okay, I thought it was.
Moving it farther away from the single family home.
No, that's better. Okay, I like it.
Okay, I don't have any further comments either. I think we're agreeing, an agreement on a curb and we'll allow the department to review that in the T D E if that's appropriate. If there's no other questions, we'll take a motion.
We'll make a motion.
Chip, seconds, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next and final item on the agenda is forty four Sherwood Drive, Sherwood Estates Conservation Subdivision. Sketch plan review for the merger of forty four and sixty Sherwood Drive and subdivision of seventeen lots. One existing house lot and one stormwater management lot on thirty one point three acres. The parcels are zones S F R, which is single family residential and A B A Airport Business Area respectively. We'll give this to the department for introductory remarks and. Then we'll turn it over to the applicant and we also have a town designated engineer reviewing this for us.
Yes, that's one of my projects.
Thank you, Monique.
I think, yeah, what you, that line that you see is the dividing line between single family residential and the airport. Design, business area designation. The airport area was previously a single family, but I think the larger issue on this site is the layout. And also. The single family zone parcel would allow, I believe, for sixteen units and eighteen are proposed over the two sites, so. I'll leave it at that. Well, there's also topography issues with the, that mound that you see on top. Sean, if you could point to it, yeah. That's proposed, I think, for a stormwater basin, but it's at a higher elevation than the, the units. Below it, so that would be.
It doesn't work under the current.
Problematic, yeah.
Are you saying they have too many lots? Is it, they calculated too many lots? Is that what you're saying?
Well, if, within the single family zone, it allows for sixteen. Now, this, this kinda crosses the two zones. They're proposing eighteen.
I see, okay.
Yeah.
All right, this is also reviewed by our town designated engineer, C H A Joe Grasso. Joe, can you give us your preliminary comments on what you see?
Yeah, Pete, so just picking up on Monique's comments about the density, I think you can only use. The, the area within the S F R zone, so I think you need to, they, they have gone through an allowable. Strain land and unconstrained land analysis. But I, but I, I believe it needs to be done for the S F R zone. To verify whether or not they can actually get those eighteen lots. So I think some additional work is done there from a. A allowable open space, based on their calculations, I think they are a little bit short. But they have not included the open space, the large open space parcel, which is. Nineteen point one acres. So when you do include that in their calculation, they do come close. So like most projects that are. You know, going for a conservation density development design, you know, we gotta get through that math, so there's, there's definitely some. Some calculations that need to be reworked when it goes for concept. I I would say that the site is not in a conservation development overlay zone. But the zoning does allow them to apply that on a voluntary basis, which they have done. Once they do apply that and it's basically a cluster, it allows them to, go ahead.
It's total discretion of the board, though, whether to permit that.
It's total discretion of the board. And then normally what happens is they will reduce the minimum lot size from eighteen thousand square feet down to a lesser amount. And the smallest lot size is within this development is ninety six hundred square feet. So a little bit, you know, roughly half of the minimum lot size allowed in the, in the S F R zone. So a couple of things from the layout, I think one, one of the things that's really unique about this site is it's. Adjacency to the Northway corridor. They are showing a fifty foot buffer there along the, the Northway, right of way. We do not think that that width of the buffer is sufficient to provide any appreciable screening between. The proposed home sites and the Northway, so we think that. A lot more analysis should be done regarding, you know, the, the openness of those views. Noise related impacts, lack of privacy, you know, between the Northway and those home sites, so. We don't think that that fifty foot buffer is, is adequate. Obviously, we're gonna need more detail regarding. The quality of the vegetation and any trees, you know, within the area to be developed. If there are trees over six inches in diameter, we would recommend that those trees be surveyed. In accordance with chapter one seventy seven, so we can identify. Trees that should or are likely to remain as the site gets, gets developed. They have obviously tried to stay away from the constrained lands of the site, which we are supportive of. There's a large D E C wetland complex that they're avoiding, and they are also avoiding the hundred foot regulated adjacent area. Which, which we are also. Feel is a desirable feature of the plan. A hundred foot adjacent area does encroach slightly into. Lot two, which you can see on the plan, and that's something that we would have to take a closer look at to see whether or not. That area to the rear yard of lot two provides important environmental protection for the wetlands because a. Article twenty four wetland permit from D E C would, would be required. We are not, in terms of the layout and its adjacency to the Northway, we are not. Totally satisfied with the location of the cul-de-sac, because it basically takes the, the extension of the road right up to that fifty foot buffer. If, if lots are going to be developed in that portion of the site, we would recommend that that cul-de-sac be cut back further. And and those home sites being pulled away from that Northway corridor. And also on the layout, you can see that Brookton Court, the new proposed road. Comes off of Sherwood Drive right at the beginning of the cul-de-sac. At an acute angle, it's not a very desirable layout of the road, so, so we would look to have some. Better design articulation and more conventional geometry of that intersection. Arrangement between Brookton Court and, and Sherwood Drive. From a utility standpoint, you know, they are showing all extension of municipal utilities. We don't see any significant issues with those. From a stormwater management perspective, they are showing the stormwater management area. You can see it on the plan. Outside of the D E C wetland buffer, which is desirable. There is a large mound of soil there. In that area that they would have to completely excavate in order to create that stormwater basin. So we would like to see some, you know, sore, boring information to see if that is. You know, natural material or unnatural material and whether or not, you know, there could be groundwater levels. Caused by the wetlands that could impact the ability to that, for that infiltration basin to. Operate adequately, so. Those are the big comments that we've got so far on our review, Pete.
Okay, we're gonna turn it over to the applicant, but I I do have a question. On, on the conservation analysis, I'm not seeing it. They've developed almost everything that's unconstrained. If you take out the constraint and do the analysis from there, it just doesn't look right to get to. To double the amount of lots, if you follow what I'm saying. I mean, the lots are kind of half sized.
Yeah, so you can see the cross hatching on the plan, the, you know, the fifty foot buffer, the wetland buffer, there's a couple other open space parcels.
That's constrained, correct?
No, those are unconstrained areas.
The hundred foot buffer is unconstrained? Well, I'd like, I'd like to ask you to look at that again, as you go through.
I would have to, I would have to check the hundred foot buffer on it, the D.
Also, the mound of dirt looks, looks like it's steeper than it's, than what you should be able to build on with all those contours.
So, so the areas in yellow that are highlighted on the plan. Are, have been verified by our office as being the constrained lands.
Okay.
So those are taking out, taken out of the calculation, so you've got the total parcel size. You subtract all the areas in yellow, then what's remaining, you take forty percent of that, which is a required. Open space area. then what's remaining, you take forty percent of that, which is a required uh, open space area, and then you add that acreage to the, the area of all the constrained lands and that becomes your required open space area. So there is some conversions, like I said, there, um, or I didn't say it at the beginning, but there's some conversions that if you impact any constrained areas, but you can see some of those steep slopes come into lots, three, four, and seven, uh, you have to over uh, compensate for those at a ratio of two to one. So.
Did you carefully, did you carefully review the, the uh, the analysis on all that?
Yeah, and that, and that's where we said it's, they're, they're a little bit sure on the open space uh, areas based on our calculation.
Okay, we'll turn it over to the applicant for their presentation.
Yep.
Does somebody hear from the applicant?
I'm not sure. I don't know if we have anybody.
Sipperly is here.
Say, I just asked him to turn you.
Yeah, okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we got you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you uh, described, uh, we're merging two parcels of land together, number sixty uh, Sherwood Drive and number forty-four Sherwood Drive to give us a parcel, which is uh, thirty-one point three acres in size. We're proposing seventeen new lots and one lot which encompasses the existing home on the property. There's also a stormwater management parcel and lot number twenty or parcel twenty would be the, well, we're proposing to be the conservation parcel. The conservation parcel is a parcel that we are suggesting or we were, we're proposing to actually convey that in fee to either the town and/or a land conservancy for its uh, perpetual conservation. With regard to the uh, conservation easement calculations, well, number one, we're, we're here before the board this evening to, to request that the subdivision be uh, considered for conservation subdivision. And we think that we think that it meets all the criteria. With the large open space, uh, the wetland area, well, as Joe explained, the constrained lands are in yellow. So there, you have the wetland and then there's some other spots of yellow uh, within the uh, buffer area and within that large uh, uh, mound on the property. Uh, our calculations uh, kind of indicate that, if I can look at them here. When we do our conservation calculations, we have nineteen point five seven acres of constrained lands, leaving us eleven point seventy-two acres of unconstrained lands. When we take forty percent of that, it equals to four point six nine acres. We're proposing uh, open space areas, conservation areas, uh, five locations, which is all the cross-hatched land, uh, which then, which comes up to about four point eight two acres. So we really have uh, in our calculations, we're, we, we exceed what the forty percent constrained lands requirement is. Uh, seventy, seventy per, seventy-seven percent of the site is really open space conservation. With regard to the uh, situation uh, that we are adjacent to the Northway, uh, number one, the, the site is predominantly wooded. So that even that area, that fifty-foot corridor that we're uh, proposing as a conservation easement, no cut area, i- is a wooded, is densely wooded right now. And also what not shown on the drawing is that that wood, woods extends about thirty feet onto the Northway because the Northway there, there's a slopes down uh, in the rear of those lots. Uh, so the thirty-foot from the right-of-way line of the Northway uh, is additional uh, wooded area in, in buffering. With regard to, you know, our, our proposal is to, you know, develop seventeen new lots. The, the lots are much consistent with the existing lots that are uh, in Beverly Park, which is an adjacent subdivision to us. It's a developed subdivision, uh, probably developed in the eighties. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's an old established subdivision. You know, the, this, the subdivision will be served by, you know, water and sanitary sewer. We're proposing for stormwater management to do an infiltration basin. We've kind of shown an outline on the drawing of where the infiltration basin would be. In all honesty, the, the outline is really, as a placeholder, it's to show where the infiltration basin would be. I, I strongly think that it's not going to be as large as we're showing it. It doesn't have to be that large. The site is colony sand. It's a external percolation. The wetland uh, relative elevation is probably about fifteen, fifteen to eighteen feet lower than where the lots would be and also the uh, the uh, infiltration basin. With regard to our intersection with Sherwood Drive, we can rework that to, to come in at a, at a a more, you know, ninety-degree type angle and it satisfies uh, good geometry at the intersection. Our, our really, our, our goal tonight is for the uh, planning board to see the merits of the conservation subdivision for this parcel. Uh, there, there is the rear of six lots that fall in the ABA zone. And if we get a favorable uh, I won't say approval, but uh, reception this evening, our next step would be to go to the zoning board of appeals to uh, either seek a uh, uh, a use variance so that we could have residential in that small area of the uh, ABA zone. Uh, or we would maybe, if that's not successful, we would maybe uh, petition the town board to rezone number sixty uh, Sherwood Drive, you know, to residential as it was back before the two thousand and seven land use plan. That's kind of our, our presentation and our request for this evening.
Okay, we'll run it around the board and uh, see what the board members have to say. Craig?
Well, it seemed, it seems like perhaps you were trying, it, obviously there's some calculation discrepancy that you, that has to get worked out. So in the area that is in yellow, where you're talking about putting the infiltration basin, just to clarify, those are constrained lands because of slope?
That's correct.
Right?
That's correct.
And so Craig, everything that gets impacted that's in yellow,
Right.
including that infiltration basin, needs to get mitigated at a two-to-one ratio.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, the fif- fifty, fifty feet, fifty-foot buffer seems, seems, uh, you know, to, I, I have to agree with Joe. I think that that probably is not sufficient and there probably does need to be a, a tree survey done and you know, I don't know whether that should be fifty feet. It, it probably needs to be at least fifty feet, but somewhere I, I would argue for more than fifty feet, that needs to be uh, surveyed. And all of that buffer area along the Northway is what's helping in their calculation, cor- correct, Joe? Cause that's all unconstrained land.
Correct.
In that buffer area, right?
Correct.
You, you know, it, it, it strikes me as there may, this, this may technically meet some of the, the requirements at some point, depending on, on how things get massaged around, but I don't know whether it meets the spirit completely. Um, because the buffer areas, that buffer area along the Northway, I'm not sure that I completely buy that that helps with all of the math. I mean, it helps with the math, but I don't know that it helps with the visual aspects. Um, I, it just seems like maybe you're trying to do too much. You've got too many lots you're trying to do here. That, that's really it, Pete.
Okay, Susan?
Joe, the lots that you're talking about too, too close to the um, Northway, are you, is that eight and nine that, that has your concerns?
Well, I, I, I think, uh, yeah, I think that the, the, the quality of the fifty-foot buffer or if there's existing woods within the Northway right-of-way is something the board should consider. But it's the penetration of the cul-de-sac so close to that buffer as opposed to typically you would stop the cul-de-sac short and then put home sites off the back end of it, which, you know, you could theoretically shorten up this road by, you know, a couple of hundred feet, so that you're not having to clear all those areas for the right-of-way and, and put the backs of the, some homes up against that fifty-foot buffer area. Do you understand what I was saying, Susan?
Yes, I do. I just think it's, it's looked like they're to, trying to do too much on this particular area. This, that's my comment.
Okay, well.
If I can comment, what we were trying to avoid there is having several lots or the backyard of several lots backing up to the Northway. As it is with our plan right now, you really have maybe eight, nine, and uh, the side yard of ten that butts the Northway. If we were to pull that cul-de-sac back, cul-de-sac back and shorten it, uh, it would be beneficial, you know, for the development costs for sure. But I would kind of, we were trying to avoid again, having the backyard of lots uh, right up against the Northway. And it, it, as I mentioned earlier, we, at the fifty-foot buffer, there's another, again, thirty-foot that exists and I don't, I don't believe that we'll see that the Northway will ever be further expanded towards this property because of the uh, you know, great situation going on there. So we really have an eighty-foot buffer now, you know, uh, that's, you know, there's plenty of other locations, you know, within the town and along the Northway corridor where there's, you know, there's actually no buffer provided. We are providing both a, you know, screen-type buffer and also because of the grade of the Northway being lower by probably ten feet to those rear of those lots or decided the lots that we're showing. You, you know, you have some uh, noise, you know, buffering and visual buffering occurring also.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
The only question I have is um, we look at lots twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. The, the rear, the rear of those lots don't exactly line up with the uh, rear of the houses on Mildred. Um, so I don't know if that's going to cause a problem. We've had issues in other subdivisions where backyards didn't line up with each other. And if somebody would have a fence, uh, for instance, uh, number twelve would have, if he, if he put a fence across his property, it would be halfway, halfway and back of number thirty-five. Now, I, you know, that's, that's a personal choice. I don't know if there's any adjustments to those lots. If you could reconfigure them a little bit to be closer to each other. Cause fourteen doesn't line up with forty-one and, you know, thirteen doesn't really line up with, with thirteen and thirty-nine and then twelve and thirty-seven and twelve and thirty-five, the, you know, the uh, I, I could see a problem, I mean, not for us as a planning board, but I could see a problem in the future. I could say we, we had an issue over in Donna Drive in uh, recently where, you know, fences didn't quite line up right and neighbors didn't take lightly to it. Uh, but I think it could, let's just take a, take a look at that lens. Let's see if there's any possible way readjusting those lot lines.
We can do that. Paul, there already is fences in the rear of.
Yeah, I see that. I see that now. Yeah. I mean, it's all different kinds of fencing. You got. I don't know. It's got wood. Yeah, I've been over there.
It's all different, all different styles. And it does have a similar situation to the Donna Drive subdivision in the, in the sense that most of the fences encroach onto our, our property, which.
Yeah, I, that's what I was going to ask. After my next question, it looks like you'd set, have encroachment quite a bit.
Yeah.
All around this. Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Chip, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I uh, yeah, the, uh, yes, I stopped on the shoulder of the uh, Northway, right about where the uh, where the circle is, the roundabout and uh, cul-de-sac rather. I can see the backs of the houses in the thirties and I, I would dare say that once you start clearing land, you're gonna, it's not gonna be nearly as dense as you think it is. And I also think it's, there may be, may be a problem with the noise factor from the uh, Northway.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Lou, do you have any comments or questions?
I just, I have to agree basically what Craig says. Uh, you, you need to get the um, the calculations straight and uh, you got here, you, you got it planned out for eighteen uh, lots and we're talking, I heard something about it should be sixteen possibly. So I think that needs to be straightened out and um, it, it, there's, there's a lot going in here. I think you're putting a lot in the space. You know, like, almost like too much in the space that you have.
Okay. Chief?
A couple of things. One, to, to Paul's point about the, the backyards not lining up, that can be rectified if they were to extend that open space that goes from fifteen to eighteen along the rear yards of eleven to fourteen. But that open space is better be restricted like we did on Donna Drive so that people couldn't clear right back up to, to the property line. Um, I forget what the name, the Conservation District or whatever it is, you know, um, but for some reason they stopped that open space between fourteen and fifteen. I think they could take a right with that and go right down to lot number ten with it, have a twenty-five-foot buffer, which I think would make the people pretty happy. Um, to uh, Chip's point, you know, sometimes people bring it up, up to us, the noise pollution factor. And I think in this area, I think the people on Mildred Lane would have a valid argument. Right now, they do have a couple hundred feet of buffer with trees to the Northway. That's going to disappear because the amount of grading that's going to be required on these lots is basically going to level everything. And I can't imagine them building that cul-de-sac without them going into the fifty-foot buffer. Um, so, you know, I, I just, I just think it may, needs some major revisions to reduce things, change things. But I think this is one time where we need to talk to people about noise pollution.
Okay, a lot of good comments. I agree with a lot of the comments. I think something could be done there, but a- actually what you just pointed out, Keith, struck me uh, quite uh, prominently, is that you can see the hatchmark of their wooded area of uh, the people on Mildred to the Northway. And if you start clearing out eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, it's going to be a noticeable difference and uh, you know, I, I don't know what the correct answer is and we don't design people's plans. I'm not opposed to the concept, but I think we need to pull it back from the Northway and uh, make sure we retain some significant screening if we're going to consent to the conservation subdivision. You know, I, I'll just leave it at that and let um, the TD and the department talk to the developer about how that might be done. I'll also make the comment uh, on the um, on the drainage area where the mound is now. If you take that mound down, that's another scre- another visual and auditory screen between the Northway and uh, the current residents and what are going to be the new residents. So I think that's, that's a detraction. So in a sense, you know, on the back you have a, a, a lot that the one that's, the airport lot is mostly undevelopable, although where there is a piece that you could develop, it'd be quite a challenge. And you're, you, in a sense, you're getting credit in a way for that, for that to put in probably too many lots. So that's the end of my comments and uh, Joe, did you want to say something?
Yeah, Pete. So just, you know, I, we started off by talking about the conservation density design being voluntary on this site. You know, I, I, I think it's, it's always important for the planning board to, to uh, think about um, if this area is going to be developed with single-family lots, whether or not uh, a conservation density design is actually appropriate and, and whether or not it results in a better layout with less impact than a conventional layout. So I, I would say we may want to ask the applicant to do uh, another refinement of both the conservation density design based on the feedback tonight, but also a conventional layout with eighteen thousand square foot lots. And, and just so that the planning board can um, verify whether or not uh, we're going down the right direction with development of the site.
Uh, this sounds like a good idea to me.
I agree.
Yeah. Anybody else on the board want to be heard on that?
Agreed.
Okay. Okay. Any further comments? Any further comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I can, if I can just interject a little bit.
Sure.
We are not in a conservation overlay zone.
Understood.
And the I I guess by the by the code, we don't really need to adhere to that forty percent of unconstrained lands. But we we can, will and will revise or will massage our calculations to 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 include that forty percent if in fact the board wants us to meet that forty percent.
Hey, Lynn, could I just clarify for the board, just so that the board doesn't get tripped up on this? So once you go conservation density design, then those design requirements do come into play. So it's not like the forty percent is an optional. Once you, once you go conservation density design, you're allowed leeway regarding your building setbacks and your minimum lot sizes. But in return, you got to meet that forty percent requirement.
Yeah, but the code specifically says that when you're not in a conservation overlay zone, that the board has the discretion of requiring that forty percent.
I think Joe's disagreeing with you on that and I, you know.
Yeah.
Once you get into the optional conservation subdivision, you, the forty percent becomes a requirement. I think that's what Joe's saying and.
Yeah, and I may be wrong. Maybe Lynn is right, but that's my understanding.
It states in the code that it's the discretion of the planning board.
Yeah, okay. You know what? That's fine. That's fine. But I think what we're asking you irrespective of that is can you do a refined conservation layout taking into consideration the comments tonight and also do a conventional layout? And so we can, if we're making a decision to to agree to conservation, I think we should know what we're comparing it to and be able to see it in black and white. So I think that's what the suggestion of the town-designated engineer is. And the board's kind of agreed with that suggestion. If if you're agreeable.
And might I add? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Craig.
Just just to clarify, my my thought is that, and you know, I don't know how everybody else feels, but if we're going to go to conservation, regardless of whether Joe is right or Lynn is right, if we're going to go the conservation route, then personally, I want to see the forty percent. Whether that's, if if that's something that is that is at our discretion, then I want to see that it is forty percent.
I think I was leaning at that for myself.
Okay, that's fine. Well, you're required, we're agreement that we'll revise the calculations to show the forty percent of unconstrained lands as being preserved also. And we'll do a regular layout with the eighteen thousand square foot lots to to a comparison, I guess, between traditional subdivision layout and a conservation subdivision layout. I think that's what you're requesting.
Yes, but and I think we also want you to take into account the comments about screening to the Northway and also the angle of the of the road coming from the existing road. And whatever other comments were made.
Yep, I've taken notes. Yes, thank you.
So just to clarify, they would be coming back for another sketch review?
I think that would be most appropriate.
Okay.
Everybody agree?
Agree.
Yeah.
And I think we can provide Lynn our worksheet that we use to evaluate these so that we will work on the things in our numbers.
Okay, that's fine. Appreciate that, Sean.
Yep.
Yeah, Lynn, you can bounce those numbers off us. We've, we've got a lot of experience going through that math and it can be pretty confusing. So just we'll, we'll work on it together.
Good. That's great. Look forward to it.
Okay, any other business before this board? If not.